Good evening, welcome to Town Council Meeting, Council Chambers, Town Hall, February 24th, 7:00 PM. Please join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number two, roll call please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Excused.
Counselor Clemens?
Excused.
Counselor Landman?
Present.
Counselor Manna?
Present.
Counselor Markucci?
Excused.
Counselor Moriarty?
Present.
Counselor Nicola?
Present.
Counselor Pellequin?
Excused.
Counselor Vandal?
Present.
Five here.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, considering accept a Town Council meeting minutes on Monday, February 10th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion, changes? Seeing none, a show of hands is appropriate. Thank you. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, A. General Government, Counselor Nicola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please bear with me, I've got mucho paperwork here.
Yeah.
I don't know. Sorry, I don't even see it. Do you see my paperwork in there? Do you see General Government?
I have no meetings.
Okay, there's no meeting minutes in the packet, but there was a meeting held last week, and that meeting was primarily to discuss the future of the airport, and we had a gentleman come in and present to us, please excuse me, sorry about that. We did have an appraisal done of the property up at the airport, the land, and that was reviewed with John Peculis, who was the gentleman who did the report. We discussed the value of the property, and we discussed the other options for the airport property, and we voted, a show of hands, and unanimously, the Subcommittee determined at that point that we chose to continue with the airport as an airport at this time. I believe that there is an agenda item in our meeting this evening to vote on that, so that was specifically what that meeting was for. I'm imagining that I will have the actual detailed minutes at our next meeting. I do have another meeting scheduled for this coming Thursday, February 27th, 7:00 up here in the Parent Room, and that meeting consists of a number of topics, one of which has to do, oh my god, I'm so sorry, this is terrible. I have a lot, let me read it to you, if I can find it. It has to do with the Casella will be coming in to discuss some, a meeting that they had with the manager and the Chair and the Vice Chair, here it is. It will be a vote to approve a contract between the town of Southbridge and Valley Communications, which, to install and upgrade existing equipment to the new equipment in the Cable Public Studio in the Town Hall. There will be a discussion about a proposed visitors' code of conduct that some of the councilors were made aware of at the Mass Municipal Association Convention last month. We will discuss the Casella meeting of January 23rd, and we will also be discussing the landfill extension agreement discussion regarding modifications and the right to perform a landfill benefit competitive market survey. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Agenda B, DPW, Counselor Vandal.
No, no report and no meeting schedule, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. C, Education and Human Services, there was no meeting, but Counselor Markucci has a meeting posted for this Tuesday, February 25th, 7:00 PM in the George Parent Room, it is one agenda item. It's a vote to approve the memorandum of agreement 2014 between the town of Southbridge and Tri Valley for the Meals on Wheels program for a 12-month at the monthly rental, so that will be her agenda item tomorrow. Moving on, D, Planning and Development, Counselor Clemens, again, a lot of these meetings somewhat postponed due to weather and stuff, so we're trying to play a little catch-up. This meeting's been rescheduled for March 4th at 6:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room on a Tuesday, so Counselor Clemens has that meeting scheduled. And I will go on to E, Protection of Person and Property, Counselor Moriarty.
Thank you. We actually had two Protections of Persons and Property meetings this past Thursday, separate agendas being, one was a reschedule based on snowstorms. Because they were done Thursday night after the packets went out, we don't have the meeting minutes for that as yet, but when we do have those, I'll read those, but the general gist of it was the first meeting, we discussed the civilian dispatch for the Police Department, which is up for a vote later tonight as well, and we'll hammer over all those sort of things later on, but that came through with a favorable recommendation. And then the second meeting, we discussed, originally we had six items planned, we got through four of them, and we will handle the others again at a future date regarding fire department business. These were no actions taken, just discussion and updates. We do have a Subcommittee meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 6th at 7:00 PM here in the Parent Room, and we have the two leftover items from the last PPP meeting, as well as one or two things that had to be, we were going to get updates on pursuant to other presentations and such. So, again, the next PPP meeting is Thursday, March 6th at 7:00 PM upstairs here in the Town Hall at the George Parent Room. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. F, Town Manager's Search Committee, we do have an agenda item before us tonight to hire a consulting firm, which will be Agenda Item Number 10, MRI. So this committee has met basically three times. The first one was January 30th, meeting was called to order at 7:02 PM by Chairwoman Dolly Markucci, presence was Terry Coloniesi, Pidi Akabuchi, Dolly Markucci, Sean Moriarty, Terry Lyle. Terry Coloniesi read the meeting minutes of 23rd, Dolly Markucci discussed scheduling of the next meeting Thursday, February 5th, 2014, at 6:30 PM to her proposed presentation from consultants. The committee discussed potential questions and provided our own profile to them. Different questions, have you worked for a town like ours, dealing with difficult politics, pay requirements? We also, they also discussed basically tough recruitment for the biggest failures. The last three Town Managers that the firm placed, again, those meetings were very brief and short, we're just starting to get that committee really up and running. They had another one on February 6th at 6:30. Again, Chairwoman Dolly Markucci present, present, committee members were Terry Coloniesi, Pidi Akabuchi, Dolly Markucci, Sean Moriarty, Terry Lyle. Donald R. Jutton, President of Municipal Resources, gave an overview of his company and operations pursuant to the Town Manager's Search. Committee fielded questions, he left around 7:15. And then we also had Maki Moss, President of MMA Consultants in Corp., gave an overview of his company and operations pursuant to Town Manager's Committee, field questions, he left at 7:55. Sean Moriarty motioned to go with Municipal Resources, Terry Coloniesi seconded the motion, all in favor, it was unanimous of five to nothing. Terry Coloniesi moved to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Pidi Akabuchi, and that meeting was adjourned at 8:00 PM, and the Recording Secretary for that meeting was Sean Moriarty. And they did have another meeting on the 19th of February in the Parent Room, meeting was called to order at 6:05 PM by Committee Chairwoman Dolly Markucci, presence were committees members, Pidi Akabuchi, Terry Lyle, Dolly Markucci, Sean Moriarty, Acting Town Manager Bob Reed, Councilors Dave Landman, Counselor Monique Manor, and Southbridge Even News reporter Chelsea Davis. Committee member Terry Coloniesi was excused. Counselor Moriarty opened and reviewed this discussion of the contract submitted by Municipal Resources and explained the Subcommittee would be asked to vote to send the contract to the Town Council for ratification. While reviewing the terms of the contract proposal, Mr. Akabuchi noted that while Municipal Resource President Donald Jutton had highlighted a warranty of services during his initial presentation to Subcommittee, there was no written guarantee or mention of the warrant in the contract. Mr. Akabuchi also suggested employing the psychological exam offered in the contract proposal and discussion of those present issues surrounding the necessity and validity of such exam. After discussion, Mr. Reed said that he would contact Municipal Resources to address the warranty. Discussion was held regarding the necessity to bring the contract to the Town Council for ratification, as well as the role of the Town Manager's Search Committee. Several speakers noted that the Town Council had previously voted to allot $20,000 for the Town Manager's Search. All present agreed that their understanding of the committee's purpose is to handle such search processes with the Town Council as a whole-making final determination towards the end of the process. Mr. Lyle moved to accept the contract with Municipal Resources, Mr. Akabuchi seconded the motion, all in favor, unanimous, four to nothing vote. Mr. Lyle moved to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Akabuchi seconded the motion, all in favor, unanimous, four to nothing vote. The meeting adjourned at 6:25, and respectfully submitted was Sean Moriarty taking the meeting. So as I said, tonight, we will be moving forward on this, on Agenda Number 10, moving forward to hire the consulting firm. And yes, Counselor Manor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I would just like the meeting minutes to reflect on January 30th, that also in attendance were myself and you. On February 6th, also in attendance were myself, you, and I believe citizens of the town Roger and Estelle Kawat were present.
That's correct.
And also on February 19th, Conrad Vandal was also present, Counselor Vandal was also present, and I just want to make a clarification that it was Counselor Markucci who opened the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on those? Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Moving on, Chairman's Announcements, Agenda Number 5. Just for informational points out there, as every Counselor, and again, I want to educate the public, every Counselor has every opportunity, as we get elected, to do, to speak to our Town Manager and stuff, so with, just like any other community, there's a lot of rumors that fly around out there, so I want to try to set the record straight as much as possible, and I don't want anyone to take this out of context. One of the conversations, and I meet with Mr. Reed every Thursday with Counselor Markucci of the Vice Chair, one of our discussions was, and I strongly believe of this, is we need to look at our snow plowing operations. Now, with that being said, our DPW does a great job, and they've been pushed to the limit this year, more so than any other thing. With that, we, and when I started digging around and looking, and I asked Karen Hinoise to give us some numbers over the past four years of what we spent, and then also reach out to other communities that are pretty much, almost a mirror of our size, that might have a little more miles of road, it was a little eye-opening. When I say a little eye-opening, I, we looked at last year's numbers for the town of Southbridge and last year's numbers for the town of Webster, and we spent almost $350,000 more than the town of Webster. With that being said, I said, I think it's time that we really need to look at, and don't get this confused, between snow plowing and sanding and our snow removal operation. So with that being said, I'm getting people saying, how come they're not picking up snow as much, and stuff like that? Well, that's just one piece of the operation that is quite costly, and so what's, quite frankly, trying to cut back on that, trying to let Mother Nature take care of it, the DPW, Heather and Ronnie Trudeau are trying to come up with creative ideas on how to change things to save some money. So, you know, I had a resident come up to me and say, can you help me out here? Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not a hypocrite. When I say something, I stay strong to my word, and it was about doing snow removal, and I'm saying, I'm sorry, I can't help you right now, and this is the reason why we can't help you. Not that we don't want to, but I, I, my opinion is, you know, when people make comments of this is how we've always done it, that's not good enough in my book anymore. It's how can we make changes without jeopardizing public safety? Obviously, I'm going to listen to the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, and their recommendations, but the bottom line is, it all comes down to dollars and cents. We're also looking at some of the snow plowing operations, if it's a small two-inch storm, which we haven't had many of those, can we do those more in-house versus calling in all the subcontractors? So I just wanted to educate the public and say, that's what's going on, our DPW is not sleeping at the wheel, they're doing a tremendous job, they're trying to make some changes with the Town Manager and the DPW Director and Ron Truano, and talking over what we're trying to make changes. So I ask the public, want to be patient on this, because as you know, it's a very expensive venture out there, and what I say to the DPW in town, I'm the worst critic for the state, because sometimes I think they're a little too heavy on what they do, too. And that's where money can be trimmed back a little without putting any of the public in jeopardy. So I'm going to apologize, but I'm just trying to be, look at these things as fiscally responsible and trying to do what's right and trying to save some, because quite frankly, we're the ones that pay it all. And we only budget so much a year as any other community does, and then it rolls over to the next year, so when does it end? So if you hear the Rumiville, this is the straight answer, this is what's happening, and as any other Counselor can do the same thing, and I'm sure, again, we're coming into budget season, we're going to be looking at everything, and these are one of the areas, quite frankly, that I think we can make some changes on. So I just wanted to inform the public of that, instead of hearing the Rumiville out there, because the Rumiville is, quite frankly, not always have their stories correct. With that being said, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 6, Town Manager's Announcements. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just say I can certainly confirm that you've stayed on top of the snow issue, whether it's plowing, removal, salting, sanding, or anything else. The first announcement is from the Tax Collector and Assessor's Office, first to thank people for paying their water and sewer bills, and also a reminder that these can be paid together with one check, so they wanted me to make that announcement. We have from the public schools, from the Supervisor of Special Education, a notice about a parent survey that's being done, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I understand every four years, goes to a particular district every four years and asks that a survey be completed by parents as to the communication from the schools on, about their child's education. So in keeping with the flyers and the posters that we've got to get the word out, I wanted to mention that, and there's additional information on this parent survey on the school's website. And apparently, it is important, because with that, DESE just determines how responsive a particular school district is to the needs and wants of parents. We'd received what's known as Annual Form 500 from Charter Communications, which is a filing with the Department of Telecommunications and Cable about complaints that Charter had received over the year. And the way I read the survey, it received a total of about 16 complaints over the years, all over the past year, all of which have been resolved in plus or minus two days. I don't doubt the validity of the report, I'll just say that this isn't the experience we had with Charter in Leicester. I would encourage anyone who is having a problem with Charter to contact the Town Manager's Office, to call the Town Hall. I believe that sometimes these complaints can be a little lower than what they might be, because in my experience in a previous town, people just get frustrated in trying to get through to Charter, so if there are any issues that people might have, whether it's with freezing service, or reliability, or what have you, please contact the Town Manager's Office. And lastly, a request that came in from the Commission on Disabilities, apparently people have been very good about sidewalk shoveling, but this is a request, if business owners and residents can get ahead of the shoveling, to try and widen the walkways to 36 inches, so it'll be compliant not only with town's regulations, but also with ADA, and make these sidewalks more handicapped accessible, if the path can be widened a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Moving on, Agenda Item Number 7, Swearing in Presentations. Tonight, we have two of them. First one will be South County Leadership Team and Director of Economics, Cassandra Ackley. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm going to try to be as brief as possible, because I think we would prefer to hear about the bicentennial, but I did ask to come before you tonight, because I wanted to brief you a little bit on a project that's being explored at the Southbridge Business Center for what we usually call the AO Campus. And I wouldn't normally come to talk about something that's just being explored, except this time, there are a lot of people involved, and I just figured that it was time to fill you in on what may be happening over there. So the project is actually in three parts. The first would be an expansion of Quinn Sigamond Community College, or QCC. The second would be a collaboration between regional industry and manufacturing and institutions of higher learning, and the third would be a new regional accelerator center to help people prepare for careers in advanced manufacturing. So as we know, in Building 5, across the parking lot from the hotel, on the first and third floors is located QCC, and in the middle is located Workforce Central. QCC has positioned itself there for one reason, because it was a beautiful campus-like campus, but for another, because they liked the idea of being where Workforce Central is, and they knew that Workforce Central would funnel students their way. It was a good match. It exceeded everybody's expectations. They've outgrown their space, and they're looking to expand. There's plenty of room to expand on that campus, but they won't be expanding by themselves. They've actually been talking to some other schools who will come forward and locate in the Business Center with them. They have identified a need, and they are prepared to address that need, and they are looking to possibly sublet the second and third floor of the conference center where the DOD has had exclusive rights. They're eight years away from the end of their contract, so they've still got plenty of time. So they're exploring the possibility of a sublet, because that space is there, it's state-of-the-art, it's beautiful, it's perfect for what they would need, move-in condition. So I said that they've identified a need, well, the need is to help people become qualified for careers in modern manufacturing. Fitchburg State actually has a program called Advanced Manufacturing. In the olden days, we all talked about low-skilled labor when we were talking about manufacturing, but that really is very rarely the case today. There are a lot of high-tech, high-paying jobs, but they need specialized and very intense training. So these schools are stepping up to be able to prepare that. I have a little sentence that I wrote that says, "So the QCC expansion program is about fitting the education with the needs, and importantly, this will be on a regional basis. There won't be another center like this, if it happens. There won't be another one in this region. So we'll once again be a regional center." And this project also includes a center where, as part of their degree work, or maybe not part of their degree work, maybe just part of practical training, students would be able to get real experience and real learning on bona fide machines such as CNC and others. They're not talking about duplicating efforts or duplicating services that you can now receive at Bay Path and vocational schools, they're talking about other types of training. Here are some of the things that they're talking about, hydraulics, photonics, advanced manufacturing, business technology, and modeling and simulation, and also some certificate training such as CAD, which is computer-assisted drafting. So there would be some certificates programs as well. And it would also include something called Mackwick Training. There is a wonderful organization that we have in our state called Mass MEP, Manufacturing Extension Partnership, and it's a collaboration of educators and manufacturers, all trying to help modern manufacturing achieve its goals. Because everybody thought manufacturing was leaving Massachusetts, it wasn't. It just needs a lot of help, and the biggest help, the biggest assistance that is needed at this point is to find qualified employees to fit their new high-skill jobs. So I didn't want to get everybody's hopes up unnecessarily, I hope I haven't done that. I just think you should know that these things are being explored in a really, really organized and pedantic way by, headed up by Quinn Sigamond Community College, and actually also the Chamber, which is the head of our regional economic organization. And they're just doing a fantastic job of going about it the right way, being organized, getting all the facts, talking to everybody. So that's why I wanted to come tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Mrs. Ackley, for that wonderful news. I attend Quinnstake on a part-time basis, and what I would like to see Quinn Sigamond Community College do is reach out more to working parents, whether it be a mom or a dad, or anybody that works full-time, and expand more so at night. Right now, what I see them do is they direct it mainly towards the day, they offer some programs here in Southbridge at They offer some programs here in Southbridge at night, but to me, it's not enough for the degree I'm vowing for. So, if you could just pass that along, I'd appreciate that.
I will. Definitely will.
I mean, because there's more than just the younger students in this community that would like to advance on their education. And is there any indication you can give us to colleges that are looking?
Fitchburg State is definitely interested. UMass Lowell, they talked about Worcester State. MAS MEP has training programs. They would definitely be interested in WPI. So, what would happen is that you would go two or three years at QCC and finish your degree into these schools. And I'm not so sure that, nothing is set in stone, but it's being explored, and all of these schools have expressed interest.
Thank you.
Counselor Nakova?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Ms. Ackley. Mrs. Ackley, when Quinn Sigamond came to Southbridge, the state had to sign off on that. Is that one of the things that is necessary for these schools to come in as well?
Yes, actually, it's the, it's actually the Board of Trustees. They all have a board, every, and what I found out, which I think is extremely interesting, is that unlike most states, Massachusetts schools are all independent. They each have their own governing board, and I believe that that's what is meant when they said the state, because they possibly could go to their board at the end of March to propose something here.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Ackley. B, Bicentennial Committee Presentation, Steve Brady. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you to the Town Council for having me this evening. I just wanted to do a little review of what the Bicentennial Committee has been doing this past year, and I want to say four months since we've been founded. And I'd like to kick it off first by letting everyone know that the Bicentennial logo for the town of Southbridge has been chosen out of a field of thirty-one entries. The effort for the logo contest was spearheaded by one of the Town Councilies, Sean Moriarty. And I'd like to introduce Charlene Arazo, who had the winning logo, to come up and talk a little bit about it and discuss the logo itself. Here she is. Charlene?
Good evening. My name is Charlene, and I had designed the new Bicentennial logo. I had entered the contest just as soon as my partner had brought me, brought it to my attention. I look at it as putting my touch and participating and helping the town with such an important event. I decided to give it a patriotic feel with the fifty stars and thirteen stripes representing the American flag, and I had put the letters SB, representing Southbridge Bicentennial. I went with a more simple look, and I'm very happy with the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. (applause). So, now, we're really starting to kick off. Over the last year, we've organized a group of about ten dedicated volunteers who are working very hard to get the Bicentennial moving and to pick up the momentum of it all. We meet on the third Wednesday of the month, every month. So, as always, with any committee, we're always looking for volunteers to help out with various things and the various undertakings that the Bicentennial Committee is doing. So, if anyone is interested, they should feel free to come to any meeting here at the Town Hall on the third Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM. Our next meeting is March nineteenth, just in case anyone's interested. We would love to have anyone show up. It'd be great. Okay, some of the things that have gone on in the past year. Number one, we've received a grant from the State of Massachusetts, a $20,000 grant, which will be used to spearhead some of the efforts, now that we have our logo, of getting some marketing items together. And we have, for instance, a deck of cards that will be able to be purchased with, and we'll market it to various groups within the community who can purchase a card that represents their organization. We're very excited about that, and that will be coming out very soon. Also, we're gonna be having a coin, a Bicentennial coin with the logo on it on one side, and another image on the back. We're very excited about that also. We also have stock certificates, which we will start selling very soon. Now, they'll be selling for $10 a share, and if anyone is interested, you can receive one of these stock certificates, or, you know, you could buy as many shares as you want. We also have a fundraising effort that's gonna be kicking in pretty soon. We're gonna be sending out a mass mailing, and there'll be different given levels over the next three years, including 2014, 2015, and then 2016. And from that, you'll be able to participate in some of the events that we are planning. Now, as for the events that are being planned by the Southbridge Bicentennial Committee, our committee will first be having a gala ball on February thirteenth of 2016. The reason it's February thirteenth is that's the closest weekend to the actual two-hundredth anniversary of the community, which is actually February fifteenth, thirteenth being a Saturday. So, we'll be having a ball on that night, and that will be at the LaSalle Center. We will be having a parade on March fourteenth of 2016, and we're looking forward to that. The reason, you may ask, why are we having a parade in May? Did I say March? Sorry.
March.
It's May fourteenth, 2016. The reason we're having it in May is to get as many schools involved as possible. We would like to seek school groups in the parade. Of course, lots of folks will have summer parades towns. We're looking to have something during the school year where the whole community and the schools of the surrounding towns that comprised, that Southbridge was made up of, that Sturbridge, Dudley, and Charlton, their schools can participate in the parade. Also, on August thirteenth of 2016, there'll be fireworks displayed, put on by Rotary, and that, we're very excited. That's gonna be a big event, and we're looking to have that at the airport. That is actually being sponsored by Rotary, which brings me to a subject I'd like to bring up. Our committee isn't so much looking to plan to do many, many events. We're planning to coordinate events. So, different organizations within the community may have ideas of doing things for the Bicentennial, and what we want to do is help coordinate it, help, help different groups do different things. For instance, the Historical Society in the town will be working on a publication of a, of a book, a reprint of a 1906 tour of Southbridge done by Luther Amadown. It's a very interesting story, and the Historical Society will be doing that, as well as refurbishing an 1855 map of the town for the town's use. Now, of course, the, we can't do all this stuff without subcommittees. So, we have a finance subcommittee, a fundraising subcommittee, a mobilization subcommittee, a social media subcommittee, a special events subcommittee, a book subcommittee. Now, the Bicentennial Committee will have its own book for the Bicentennial, whereas the Historical Society book will deal with just the reprint of the historic tour of the town. And lastly, we have a quilt committee, and we're looking for volunteers to come help out with the quilt. That, that committee's headed up by Francine Farland, our secretary, and she's very excited about getting the quilt going. So, with that, I think I've covered just about everything about what we're doing. Are there any questions?
Any councilors? Councilor Moriarty?
Not so much questions. I think I probably know the answers to the questions I would've had, but I just wanted to kind of note, the $20,000 that we, that we got from the state, I just wanted to kind of publicly thank Senator Moore, who really kind of came to us. We didn't even talk to the man about pulling this together. He came to us and pulled this together on his own, without any prodding from us, which was fantastic, and that $20,000 as a seed money, if you will, is a huge head start on, on what needs to be raised to put all of this together. Also, wanted to just kind of congratulate and commend each of the people who put together a logo entry for the logo contest. As Steve had said, we had thirty-one of them and five finalists, and then Charlene won unanimously through a panel of, of actual artists from the community. But there were a lot of really, really good entries that, that were in there, and some of those entries may pop up again as, as kind of logos for certain events or otherwise. And wanted to thank Southbridge Savings Bank. Our honorary chair, Phil Pettenelli, in, in Southbridge Savings Bank sponsored that contest, so there was a $200 cash prize, being the two-hundredth anniversary and such. And then, lastly, aside from reaching out to any, any members of the, of this Bicentennial Committee, you can find information a few different ways. You can go to our, our website, southbridge200.org. If you go to southbridge200.com works as well. You can like us on Facebook at facebook.com/southbridge200, and then you can also follow us on Twitter, @southbridge200. And just kind of, again, wanted to thank the members of the committee that could have came out tonight, just for all their work that they've done so far, and, and the ridiculous amount of work that we still have to do over the next eighteen to twenty-four months. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Thank you, Mr. Brady.
You're welcome. The one last thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank the Arts Center, because they really pulled it together for the presentation of the logo. That, that was a, a real step up by the Arts Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to come before the council and speak on something that's not on the agenda this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bob Chakowsky. I live at Janet Avenue, Southbridge. Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, councilors, I'm here tonight to represent the Board of Health. As you may recall, at your last meeting, by the way, I missed your roll call tonight, and I noticed that a lot of people aren't here. I hope we're, just didn't get out that I was coming tonight.[1395.01][1395.01](laughter) But anyway, in your, at your last meeting, in the Town Manager's announcements, you heard that we're working on a regulation for smoking or access of youth to smoking in Southbridge. Tonight, I wanted to just inform you that at our meeting on the twentieth of February, we finalized the regulation that we are proposing, and we will have a public hearing on this regulation on March twentieth, starting at seven o'clock. This all came about as a result of a, an inquiry from the committee in central Massachusetts that deals with smoking cessation. They came to see us and said, wanted to know if we still wanted to belong to their organization since we didn't have a formal proposal, if you will, on smoking. Since then, we found out that a previous Board of Health had written a set of regulations, but never held a hearing and never put it in force. So, on the basis of that regulation, some information from the state and from the council over in Worcester that deals with this subject, we put together a draft for our regulation, and it does deal with youth access to tobacco and nicotine delivery devices. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that nicotine delivery devices, right now, are not regulated by the state. I assume that they will be soon, if they haven't been already. I know some bills have been introduced into the legislature to do this. After working on a draft of this, we submitted it to the Town Attorney, Caprera, for his review and suggestions. He got back to us with a number of suggestions. We have since incorporated those into our final draft, and in compliance with the general laws and to make sure that we have maximum public awareness, this will be published in the Southbridge Evening News at least twice before the twentieth. It also will be on the website. It'll be available at various places around town, as well as here in Town Hall. But we wanted to make sure that you were aware of the regulation as the council, and so tonight, I will leave you with copies of it, and just what we're proposing. And I, I will, I would like to emphasize that our thrust is to prevent the availability of tobacco and nicotine devices to youth, that's under eighteen. We are not trying to put in a formal smoking cessation program for adults that are performing an act that is still perfectly legal. Something like that may come in the future, who knows? But right now, we want to get on record for having this regulation in place. Everyone who currently holds a permit to sell tobacco or tobacco products in Southbridge will be informed by letter of this hearing that we're having, so that we can get their comments. We invite you all to come. So, on that, I will leave you a number of these. There's many more than what you need tonight. Perhaps the excess of these could be left, maybe on the counter at the Town Clerk's office downstairs, or the treasurer, where they're available to the public. But this is for your review, and if you have any comments, you can get in touch with Mr. Pelletier, or myself, or any other member of the Board of Health, or come to the public hearing, which will be on March twentieth at 7:00 PM. I think it's the Veterans Conference Room downstairs. That's where we generally hold our meetings. Our regular Board of Health meeting will take place immediately after that public hearing. So, I will leave you with these copies, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chakowsky. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Anyone else that would like to speak during Citizens Forum? Seeing none. And move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Vote to Approve the Hiring of Civilian Dispatch for the Police Department and Ratify the Pay-Scale Benefits and Job Description for This Position. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Councilor Vandal?
Mr. Chairman, I was under the impression that we were gonna go with civilian dispatches to save money. I don't really like them piggybacking off the police contract of minimum seventeen sixty-three an hour, step one, eighteen fifty-two an hour, step two, nineteen forty-seven an hour, step three, $20.43 an hour, maximum, twenty-one forty-three. And then mirror the holiday pay found in the police con, in the police contract, and then three, mirror the shift differential benefits in the police contract. Where, where are we gonna be saving money? That, that was the whole purpose of it, that I thought. Do you have an answer for me?
I will let the chief discuss this.
Good evening. What we did is we did a survey of numerous police departments around, and this is right in the middle of the pay scales that they offer for civilian dispatch. The savings are in many ways. A six-month minimum academy that a police officer goes to, these people don't go to. Replacement of a personnel, we can do that in a couple of weeks, not in a year. If I have an overtime shift right now, anybody in the department can take it. Some of our sergeants make $58 an hour overtime. sergeants make $58 an hour overtime, that's not going to happen here. But primarily, I would say, the real saving is in the amount of training and in the amount of time necessary to replace a person. Our intent is to bring two people in full-time right away, and to have three or four people per diem, less than 20 hours a week, there will not be any benefits. And hypothetically, if we had a person Monday through Friday on the second shift, of course, we'd have to cover them on Saturday and Sunday, and a per diem person could do that without occurring any benefits, and that certainly doesn't happen now. I feel that, you know, those will be, I know those will be huge savings to the town, just in that in itself. Over the years, we've lost approximately $190,000 in available funds every year. We don't get community policing anymore, nobody in the state does. We don't get JAG grants, anybody, nobody does. We do not get block grants anymore, nobody does. A lot of these were cut after 9/11, Homeland Security took over a lot of these funds. The best way that I can see to get the police officers back on the beats, to have a quick replacement for a person, to minimize the training necessary while staying within the standards of the state, are these. Now, when this says mirror the police contract, the only reason we did that is that anybody hired under this is going to fall under the Town of Southbridge Personnel Regulations. Anybody who's non-union now, folks who work in the Town Hall, things like that, that's what I fall under, lieutenant. And of course, with civilian dispatch, we can't just send them home because it happens to be a holiday. So what other communities do is they follow pretty much the police contracts and say, that benefit they get, obviously, they have to work on the holidays. And then the Town of Southbridge Personnel Regulations don't speak to shift differential at all, we don't get anything like that, whether the lieutenant or I work nights or whatever, you know, the fire chief, the regulations we work under don't talk about that. But all of the civilian dispatch that we looked at, when they work nights and holidays and that, they do mirror those. So that's why those two pieces are there, it's not really to pay them the same. And now the pay scale itself, that is not a police pay scale, that's really S7 is the scale, we looked at all of the different scales within the personnel regulations for the town, and this follows basically under a person who would come in as an administrative assistant or a secretarial position. And I know it's not exactly that, it's, you know, it's kind of hard to balance checking prisoners, emergency calls, all the things that are necessary with a dispatch to any position we currently have. So that's why we reached out to the other communities around to see really what it would take to get people here.
Thank you, thank you. Council Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. To the chief, this is also an action item, so to say, from the police audit, you're just doing, you're following up on one of their recommendations also.
Well, to tell you the truth, I've had this in my requested budget for eight years, you know, this is, we're the only town around that has police officers sitting on the desk. While they do a great job, and we have some people who are very competent at it, it just does not make sense to do all that training, have all that experience, all those tools, sitting on somebody sitting, you know, dispatching and answering the phones. This has really been a long time coming, it's been negotiated for a long time, and it's here, and so it really is a positive step all around.
Thank you.
Council Nicole.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to the chief. Chief, in the PPP meeting that I attended last week regarding this particular item, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is going to free up those officers to also possibly walk some Main Street beats.
Absolutely, and what I like about this, one of the major components of this that I like, is if we do have an officer who retires, or someone go off to the state police or something, this is the kind of thing, I can bring someone in in a couple of weeks, I don't have to wait six months and civil service exams and all those things, the things that, okay, now I got to pull a detective, now I don't have that extra person to put on the beat. We absolutely, if the council deems this appropriate, we hope to be hiring within the next week, and I will have beats on the schedule for this spring.
Do you also anticipate, again, correct me if I'm wrong, the two full-time positions for the civilian dispatcher, are you pulling from the auxiliary for that?
We do have one person from the auxiliary we're hoping to bring in, he's expressed a sincere interest, and I believe he will. There's another person we're looking at from a neighboring community who's got about 10 years' experience, and we're hoping to bring that one person in with a lot of experience to help us really put the whole structure together. We can oversee it, we know it's necessary, but I think it would be very helpful to have somebody who's done this, who's been there for a decade, who knows the community, to help, you know, incorporate everything that's necessary in this.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Council Moriyati.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that the plan is definitely to have increased foot patrols and such, especially when the warmer weather comes. While I certainly understand and sympathize with the thought of the pay scale, at the same time, when it comes to hiring the right person to answer the phone calls in the event of possibly even life and death emergencies, certainly we need to be able to pay somebody that is qualified, so in that regard, you know, it's, I suppose, a necessary evil if you want to look at it that way. I know these people would have to undergo a good deal of training and really be dealing with, similar to what our actual officers do, where they're going to be dealing with a lot of people and very difficult and at times emotional issues, so I just wanted to kind of say that I'm in support of this regardless of the pay at the moment, thank you.
I will be the last one, the chief is absolutely correct, there's been talk about this for a long time, and we are definitely one of the last communities to do it, and I really believe eventually there will be, will there be a cost savings drastic right away, probably not, but the point is, and he said it very clearly, is you're going to take a trained police officer and actually get him on the street versus a civilian, which he can get up and running as quick as possible. I really think it's a no-brainer, I'm glad this day finally came, because boy, oh boy, I mean, the police union did support this finally during contract negotiations, there was a lot of discussion going back, and I, yeah, was that one of the things that was brought up in the audit? Yes, it was, but I'm a believer too, and what I said on that audit is, you can't, if you don't address some of the issues that are brought up, then we just wasted all our money there, so I've been true to my word in trying to help out on some of those needs, and I will absolutely support this this evening. With that being said, if there's no other discussion, roll call please.
Council Landervan.
Yes.
Council Manah.
Yes.
Council Moriyati.
Yes.
Council Nicole.
Yes.
Council Vandal.
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Agenda Item Number 10, Vote to Ratify the Agreement Between the Town of Southbridge and Municipal Resources Inc., MRI, in the Amount of $14,800 to Perform Services to Assist in the Town in Recruiting the Town Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this? Council Moriyati.
I just wanted to note that the council, through the Town Manager's Office and such, received three different companies that were interested in coming to terms with the town on this sort of deal. We met with two of them, one of them was unable to actually come and present with us, and not only was this unanimous, but it was a very hearty unanimous, it was, for those that were at the meeting, it was very clear to all of us that Municipal Resources Inc. was bar none the one we wanted to go with, and going through the contract, and Mr. Jutton, the president of the company, were very confident with them and very pleased to be able to go forward with that, thank you.
Thank you, council. Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call please.
Council Manah.
Yes.
Council Moriyati.
Yes.
Council Nicole.
Yes.
Council Vandal.
Yes.
Council Landervan.
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 11, Vote to Continue with the Operation in Southbridge Municipal Airport as an Airport. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this? Council Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I would just like to say that I'm really hoping that this does go through, so the Airport Commission can go on with what they're trying to get accomplished up there, and they can get their grant money to start the process of making the necessary repairs that they need to make up there. I think this has been held up too long, and I am very happy to see it on the agenda, and happy to see that it went up to council with a high recommendation. That's all, thank you.
Anyone else? Again, basically what Council Manah said is, we, I think for the first time in a long time, we actually did our due diligence up there. I was one that was sitting over there probably a year ago saying, hey, before we spend any more money up there, let's just look at our avenues, and we actually did all that homework, and we did come up to the conclusion that, and with proper leadership, and I'm going to hold the airport, and the Airport Commission to say, let's move forward now, let's not stay stagnant. I think this could be run properly, and it could be a good asset to the community, I just think over the years it's been a little stale, and it's time that we can move forward now, now that we did all our studies, and we got the land appraisal, and we reviewed different options and stuff like that, we have a pretty clear mind which direction we're going in, so I am excited, I'm excited for this Airport Commission to stop moving forward. As Mr. Reed, we've been going back and forth, I said, we're ready to go, we just wanted to make sure we did all our due diligence first before we keep on going. Mr. Reed, do you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
I just wanted to acknowledge the work that the manager has done, and also the Airport Commission in helping to move this forward. They took time out from their busy schedule to go to that meeting in Boston at Logan, which I thought was a very important meeting, they've been a tremendous help to me in both educating me and helping to move this forward, so I think that they have not just a very good knowledge of where this airport wants to go, where they would like to take it, but they've been a huge help in moving this whole process forward.
Thank you. With that being, oh, Council Nicole.
Thank you. I just, for the public's knowledge, because there were quite a few people at the General Government Subcommittee Meeting regarding this, but most everybody there were interested parties. For the public themselves, I just want to read a portion, very shortly, of the appraisal that was done. After reviewing all of the options, the conclusion was this, and I quote, "Considering current zoning requirements, the characteristics, condition, and appeal of the improvements, as well as current market conditions, the highest and best use of the site as improved is to continue use as is with infrastructure improvements." They determined the value of the property as if it was not an airport, but in looking at all of the options that we had put in front of them, they felt that an airport was the way to go. That was their opinion, and the council and members, other members of the Subcommittee concurred. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call please.
Council Moriyati.
Yes.
Council Nicole.
Yes.
Council Vandal.
Yes.
Council Landervan.
Yes.
Council Manah.
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 12, Vote to Approve the Proposed Sign by Law Changes as Prepared by the General Government Subcommittee Meeting on January 16, 2014. This says the second reading, but in all, actually, this is actually the first reading of this, so if we could have that amended, just to reflect that, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on the amendment?
If we want to make a change on this bylaw thing, can we, this is the first reading?
This is only, yes, this is the first reading, but I want to, as it says, it says the second reading, but in this case, it is only the first reading on this, so we're just amending it, saying, stating it's the first reading right now, and we will still have after this two other readings of it.
Any more subcommittees on this?
No.
We've had, we've had quite a bit of Subcommittee Meetings on this already, we really have.
There's something in here that I don't like. I don't like, I don't like the idea of telling people that own variety stores, convenience stores, or stores, that they can only put so much signage in their window. It's their window, the way I look at it. If they want to paint them black, if they want to put signs, that's their window. Who am I to tell them, that's, they're trying to sell a product, and most of them are put in by salesman, they come in and put these signs in their windows. I mean, I don't think, I like to tell them, you only can put 10% of the signs in your window, you've got to leave them open. Open for what? It's not my business to tell them what to put, you know, in their, it's their windows, more or less. Thank you.
You're welcome. Council Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Are we just discussing the amendment to change this to the first reading, and then are we going to read it again, and then have another discussion on this?
Yes, what's happening right now, we're just going to deal with the amendment right now, then after the amendment, actually, Council Moriyati is going to assist in this going over it, then if we need to make any amendments, further amendments or changes, we will do that then.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just, right now to amend.
I just wanted to get that clear, thank you.
Any other councilors? So this is on the amendment for the change, instead of second reading, will be the first reading, roll call please.
Council Nicole.
Yes.
Council Vandal.
Yes.
Council Landervan.
Yes.
Council Manah.
Yes.
Council Moriyati.
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you, councilors. So now it's going to vote to approve the proposed sign by law changes as prepared by the General Government Subcommittee Meeting on January 16, 2014. This is the first reading, and I will ask Council Moriyati to assist in this, thank you.
Thank you. And again, this is, we're doing this in accordance with the way that the Town Council, Caprera, has suggested. So with the changes, on page 3, Section 9-202-5, we removed the words, quote, "With the exception of appropriate light during holiday seasons and open information," end quote, we also added the term "electric message centers." On page 4, Section 9-202-5, subsection C4, remove, quote, "A maximum amount of 50% of the glass on storefront windows may be used for signage," end quote. On page 6, Section 9-202-6, subsection F, and this is what Council Vandal had been referring to, we removed the language that stated "display window signs, signs on the surface of or inside display windows lighted only by the building illumination and covering no more than 10% of the display window area are allowed," end quote. On that same page, same subsection F, it becomes "non-commercial signs, buildings occupied solely for the political, civil, it should be civic. Buildings occupied solely for the political, civic, philanthropic, educational, religious, or other non-commercial purposes are exempt from regulations except that they are subject to public safety requirements." On page 6, 9-202-6, subsection H, we added "seasonal decorative signs, seasonal decorative signs and residential decorative signs are exempt from regulations except that they are subject to the public safety requirements." On page 6, 9-202-6, subsection I, we added a definition for the electronic message center, and that definition reads, "Means any sign on which the characters, letters, or illustrations can be changed automatically or through electronic or mechanical means. Electronic message centers include time and temperature signs." On page 7, Section 902-9, subsection J, we added "for yard and garage sale signs, not to exceed 5 square feet, displayed on private property, and limited to one on, to each premise. Not to be erected earlier than three days." Shit, they've got, okay, that's what it is, it's a typo with a parentheses. So, "No earlier than three days preceding the sale and shall be removed within 24 hours following the sale." Also added, 9-202-10, "Signs which were legally erected before adaptation of this bylaw shall not be voluntarily rebuilt, altered, or relocated without conforming to this bylaw." And those are the changes within, and I believe a copy of all of this is available throughout Town Hall.
Thank you, council. Council Nicole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to make a correction. Where F, where we have F, becomes "non-commercial signs." If you recall, Councilor, we decided to take "political" out of there because "political signs" has its own bylaw.
That is correct.
So "political" comes out of "buildings occupied solely." Under "non-commercial signs," it is simply "buildings occupied solely for the civic, philanthropic, et cetera." No "political."
Just, if I may.
Certainly, Council.
The "political" part is a separate item, as Council Nicola noted, and just for the public's sake, that one reads, "Due to federal First Amendment rights, political signs are exempt from regulation except that they are subject to public safety requirements. Political signs shall be installed no sooner than 90 days before an election and shall be removed within seven days after the close of polls."
That wasn't changed.
Right, but we need a motion to amend it, to take out that.
I make that motion, to amend.
To remove?
Page six dash nine dash two oh two dash six, F becomes "non-commercial signs, buildings occupied solely for the," and we would remove at that point, the motion would be to remove the word "political" and just continue with "civic," which by the way, needs to be corrected. It says "civil," it should say "civic."
Correct.
"Philanthropic, educational, religious, or other non-commercial purposes." Second.
Any other discussion on that? Council Manor.
Are we just discussing, because I have, I do have some discussion.
We can take it step by step. What's, we have a
The motion.
Motion and second on this one. Anyone have any more discussion on this? So we're going to remove "political" and make the word "civil" civic.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manor?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you. Now we'll go on. Any other? Council Manor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I do, reading through this and reading through some old signage bylaws and reading through some meeting minutes from the subcommittees, I do have a problem with page four and page six. Page four being nine dash two oh two dash five and page six being nine dash two oh two dash six, to remove any verbiage out of there without the stores having any type of, they can do whatever they want basically to their windows. They can cover them 100%. Like Council Vandal said, they can paint them black for as long as he's concerned. I would like to see that stay in there and actually be changed back to 25%. Reading the meeting minutes from December 9th, this went up to, to Council for recommendation to actually change that from 10% of the glass in the storefront windows to 25% of the glass in the storefront windows. That was all in favor, it was a three to zero vote, and one of those people that actually, it was a citizen member, Mr. James actually voted on that to bring it up to council. And then, with, at another meeting, I'm not sure on the exact date, there's so many papers to this, it isn't even funny, that Council Moriarty was at and Mr. James was at, I was at that Subcommittee Meeting. There was talk and all of a sudden now Mr. James changes his mind and now he doesn't want this in here whatsoever. So that, to me, it's kind of confusing to me. I don't understand why he would vote to bring it up to full council with a recommendation of the storefront windows being covered 25% and then all of a sudden change his mind and, no, I don't want this in there at all. And also, back in the 1980s, our historical council actually, they put in here, one of the purpose for the signs here and regulated, "In the interest of promoting traffic safety, preventing adverse community appearances while protecting the character of the area in which they are located." That to me is pretty strong. You know, the appearance of our town, that says something. Back in the 80s, and we've had this 10% in our bylaws since then. I mean, the historical commission is saying this and that says a lot. We do, to protect the appearance of our town, the character. We have a historical downtown district. We have a campaign to make Southbridge home, to say that you can cover your windows in black. Even in condominiums, you go to condominiums, you have rules and regulations, you can't even hang up sheets on your windows in some communities to cover the windows. You have to have something up there, curtains or blinds or something, because it's the appearance. You don't want to give somebody, you're trying to bring people into the community. So appearance to me is everything. So I would like to make a motion to change page four dash nine dash two oh two dash five and page six dash nine.
Counsel, I'm sorry, let's just do one at a time.
Okay, first I'd like to make a motion to change page four, nine dash two oh two dash five, to read, "A maximum amount of 25% of the glass on the storefront windows may be used for signage," as was recommended at the December 9th Subcommittee.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll make, I'll second that.
Second. Hey, I have a motion and I have a second and it will read, you're going to change the maximum amount from 50% to 25%?
Yes, keep that in.
Yeah.
Strike out, remove, and keep that in, and keep a maximum amount of 25% of the glass on storefront windows may be used for signage.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Discussion?
Please.
Certainly.
If I could. I just have a couple of things I'd like to say about these particular items. There was a lot of spirited discussion at the original General Government Subcommittee about these two particular parts of the signed bylaw regarding what percentage, if any, of a storefront window should be covered with signage. And specifically, I think we're looking at convenience stores. And at that first meeting, there were compromises made. People were all over the map and eventually everybody kind of compromised on 25%. Since that time, I did a little research and I spoke to some of the convenience store owners in the community, because I, along with a few other people, were under the impression that when you go, let's say for instance, I sell Marlboro cigarettes and I go to Cumberland Farms to sell my Marlboro cigarettes, I was under the impression that the owner of that store would get some kind of a discount if I put my Marlboro sign in the window. That's not true. There is no benefit to the store owner in putting up a sign in his window that's provided to him by the product owner at all. I've gone by some of these convenience stores where, I'm going to pick on Marlboro, where you see three Marlboro signs in the window. First of all, unless you're a complete idiot, if you're going into a convenience store to buy cigarettes, you don't have to guess that they sell cigarettes. They sell cigarettes. You don't need three Marlboro signs in the window to prove that point. And you're not going to drum up more business by having three signs in the window. Another thing that I wanted to discuss is the fact that we will soon be having a convenience store on Main Street that will be going into the area which is now where Friendly's is. And I would say that this, these two items, these two sign, signage items are important, if for nothing else but for that. It's free country. Somebody owns private property, they can sell it to whoever they please. And that seems to be what's happened here, but it's on our Main Street. And while I have no problem with convenience stores, I would hope that the convenience store that does go onto Main Street is going to use a little bit of discretion and try to remain somewhat less commercialized with what they're putting in their windows. And I'm hoping that if this does pass, that we do our due diligence and enforce these bylaws, because one of the things that you have to remember in all of this, not only with the signed bylaws, but with the bylaw bylaws, is they're not always enforced. And you can argue all you want about what goes into this bylaw, but that doesn't mean it's enforced. Nobody goes around and gives somebody a ticket because they've got three signs in their window or 75% of their windows are covered up. And I'm hoping that we do a little bit better job of policing that, specifically for the new addition coming towards Main Street. And again, no offense to convenience stores, but I think they have their place. Main Street I don't think is one of them, but that's, that's just me. Anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Moriarty.
Thank you. I too did a bit of homework on this as well. I know I've been kind of one of the sticklers against this. Just to kind of, in response to some of the things we've heard, in terms of condominiums and the homeowner associations are kind of what you're referring to, I take it. You know, that's the same thing that we just saw in the news where a family was ordered to take down a welcome home banner for a family member coming back from war. I don't think that's appropriate. My personal neighborhood that I'm living in, where we are in the process of becoming a town-accepted road, people on my street had talked about possibly forming such an association in order for more or less leverage power with the town. And that was summarily shot down by the great majority of us because of that exact thing. We don't want to open ourselves up to such restriction and gentrification, which to me is what this is kind of all about, whether it's intended well or not. In terms of no benefit to having signs in your window, I think while you may assume that the Marlboro is there, certainly at CVS, that's not the case anymore or soon won't be, but in general, signs in those windows, whether they're provided by the manufacturer or the company selling to the store, it does have a benefit in terms of letting people know what they have for sale in there. We had talked in Subcommittee and enforcement, I agree, if we have a bylaw, whether I agree with a bylaw or not, it should be enforced and enforced strictly. However, at the Subcommittee Meeting, we talked about how, or some talked about how the bylaws were not necessarily meant to be strictly enforced, that they're more or less a guiding post, that we're not going to send anybody out with tape measures and kind of saying, oh, you know, you're at 4% more than you should be. So if we do have something, it should be enforced. If you look at our great, our largest, in terms of commercial, not talking about manufacturing warehouses, tool companies and manufacturing companies, but in terms of storefronts, the biggest tax bases we have in this town, you know, I'm not with the Assessor's Office, but I would assume CVS is one, that is about 80% of their window space is covered up by signage. Large red signage that covers up almost every inch of glass that they have. Dunkin' Donuts, we have two or three of those in town, same thing. They have, you go down there any given day, you're going to see a five-foot-tall giant cup of coffee or hot chocolate or what have you on their window fronts numerous times. And we all know that you can get a cup of coffee at Dunkin' Donuts. Beyond that, looking around our neighboring communities, one of my biggest concerns with this is, Southbridge is, for better or worse, we are not exactly the hub of local businesses. We do not have a lot of local businesses. I'm a big history guy and love the historic nature of our downtown. However, if you look at our downtown, how many of those storefronts are actual thriving businesses? How many of them have businesses? A lot of them have social service groups, and not that there's anything wrong with a social service group. I prefer that the old video dimensions be a business rather than a social group, but that is what it is. Businesses are not knocking down our doors to come into Southbridge. We have to make the effort to do the whole makes-out-for-home, discover Southbridge. The Economic Development Committee has to do a lot of work to try and bring businesses into town. I don't think we've got a whole lot of those businesses coming into town, certainly not that have lasted. So by creating a restriction or enforcing this older restriction that would require a small percentage of your window front being able to be used for advertising, to me is overreaching in terms of what the government's purpose is. One of the problems I have with this is if Southbridge, which we are, again, we're not, we're not exactly a destination for a lot of these businesses to come into town, whether that's, you know, fair or not. One of the problems with this is if we have this restriction and neighboring towns do not, why would I come to Southbridge? If I look at Southbridge, if I'm looking at Southbridge and Charlton, for example, and I'm trying to decide where I want to open up my business and Southbridge has a restriction and this one doesn't, why would I, you know, that's one more tick in the negative column, in the cons. I went through the bylaws of a number of neighboring communities. Of the eight closest communities to Southbridge, within Massachusetts anyways, only two of those committees, communities included any restriction whatsoever to the amount of signage that may be erected in a business's window space, one of which is Sturbridge, which allows for 25%, which by the way, was more than what our current restriction is, which is, I don't want to say comical, but considering Sturbridge is this one town that everybody looks at and talks about how ridiculous their signed bylaws are and how much business that's driven away or hampered in terms of the movie theaters that, you know, they finally got one in after, however many had come through potentially that fell apart because of things like signed bylaws. The other one was Auburn, which also had 25%. Auburn also restricts political signs to no more than 12 square feet in area, which would dwarf, rather would be dwarfed by what we have. The towns of Charlton, Dudley, Lester, Oxford, Spencer, and Webster, and Mr. Reed can confirm, I would imagine, on Lester, going through their bylaws as best I could, none of those towns, none, not a single one of those six other neighboring towns have any such restriction on how much window space can be covered with signage. And if our neighbors who are, who are our competitors in terms of businesses that are possibly coming to town, into the area, if they don't have this, why would we put ourselves at a natural competitive disadvantage in that regard? Spencer in particular has very extensive signed bylaws, pages upon pages, more than what we've got in this packet. However, not a single mention about window front signage. So they've got more restrictions than we do overall, but they don't even touch the bylaws, rather the window fronts. Looking beyond just the immediate area, certainly I didn't go through all 351 communities in the state, I don't quite have that much time, but going through a good number of them, especially ones that in my mind mirror Southbridge in terms of demographics and size or economy, the great majority of these bylaws and ordinances in towns and cities have no mention or restrictions whatsoever on window front signage. In fact, Fitchburg in particular states, quote, "Window signs shall not require permits and shall not be included in calculating the total allowable signage." So quite frankly, it's, I understand the concern that perhaps some business owner may cause a blight of their storefront by painting it black or filling it with a half dozen Marlboro signs or what have you. However, it is not the role of local government, state government, federal government, any government, to restrict what kind of signage somebody can put in place. That certainly isn't what I think anybody envisions the government doing. And I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
I got Council Nicola and Council Manor. Go ahead.
I don't, I do agree with some of what Council Moriarty said, however, I must say this. As it stands right now, with basically carte blanche as to what you want to do with your window space, I do not see people banging down the door to bring their businesses into this community, number one. And if 25% of the glass restriction would be enough to keep you out of Southbridge, if that was the only reason that you didn't bring your business to Southbridge, I would be so very happy to change the bylaw on the spot. What I'm simply suggesting is not to be snobbish, not to turn business away or make it difficult for businesses. I truly believe that bylaws in general are a guideline with an enforcement ticket on the end of them. However, a signed bylaw is a guideline. And there are an awful lot of, there was a lot of talk in the Subcommittee about, well, what if you already are existing and you have this, this, or whatever, anything that might fly in the face of the changes that have been made in the signed bylaw. And basically, what you have, you have. Nobody's going to go and say, well, you've had this for 20 years and now we've got a bunch of bylaw change, so you have to take it down. No. When it comes down, if it now is falling within that 25%, then it stays down. That would be the way, that would be the way we're looking at this. I understand what you're saying, however, this is a community that is a little soft when it comes to enforcement in a lot of things. And I think at some point, we have to start getting a little bit stricter about, about ourselves and have a little more respect for ourself as a community. What is on Main Street right now has nothing to do with signed bylaws or, or any other bylaws for that matter. And, and that is well before this, these bylaws have even been considered. So I, I don't really feel that us putting a bylaw into effect that might neaten up a storefront window is really going to have an adverse effect on any new business coming into Southbridge. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Council Man.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Again, I'm going to emphasize appearance, appearance is everything in a community. I travel during the summer a lot, my husband and I, when we take vacations, we don't fly because it's very expensive. We drive and we drive a lot of places. We drive halfway across the country, we drive to the southern part of the country. I don't, I don't book my hotels in advance because I want to know what they look like. And when we're driving and we're tired, I'll look at the windows of a hotel to see what they look like. And that will tell me, that, that will be the determinant factor if I stop at that hotel or not, same as a restaurant. Also, Council Moriarty talks about the government shouldn't be putting these restrictions, it's not what it's for, we shouldn't be putting these restrictions. But I'm looking at this and we've got restrictions everywhere. We've got yard sale signs, no more than five square feet. Well, if we're going to take the restrictions away from that, we might as well take it away from the yard sale signs. I mean, we might as well take it away from everything. What's the sense in having any bylaws if the government's restricting? You need to have something in the community. You need to have something. And by not having anything for the windows, to me is, is not good, especially for the core of our downtown, when we're trying to attract businesses here. We get some really good businesses in our downtown. We do have some nonprofits. We got Styles, we got Zoe's Pizza, there's right in the center. We got, we, we got Dynasty Restaurant right on Main Street, we've got Village Photo. There's, there's a lot of businesses besides the nonprofit businesses down there. And they make their windows look nice and they don't cover them up. So to me, appearance is everything. And that's, that's one of the things that, that are going to attract more businesses, more, more clothing stores possibly, more restaurants into our community, is the appearance of our community. The streets being clean, the windows looking nice, the sidewalks looking nice, the trees being pruned, all that stuff does attract people. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Here. Council Moriarty.
Thank you. I just wanted to note of, of some of those businesses, and I agree, we, we do have some good businesses in town. However, if you go down to Styles, one of the businesses mentioned, their windows are covered far more than 25%. If you go to Dynasty, that is also covered more than 25%. If you go by the actual definition in the bylaws in terms of sign, and, and we went over this, we haggled a little bit, my interpretation was different than, than some of the others. But the definition of signs, and perhaps I read this a bit broadly and liberally, but reads, according to the bylaws, means any device, structure or object for visual communication that is used for the purpose of bringing the subject thereof to the attention of others located on property owned or leased by the sign owner. When you talk about any device, structure or object, and again, perhaps I'm being too liberal and broad with this, but if you go to Village Photo, another one of the businesses mentioned, while they may not have it attached to the window itself, their window space is covered with various products, different frames, different pictures, different products, the, not the quilts, but the throws that, that you can get with your pictures on there, et cetera. Again, so these are all businesses that are well in excess of that 25%. Some of these businesses, you know, we talked about how, how there's, I guess, a grandfathering of sorts, that if you've had this for 20 years, then, then we're not going to bother. However, as Councilor Man pointed out, we had a 10% bylaw that goes back to the 80s, which is what is currently on the books apparently, but not being enforced. So for Styles, Dynasty even, because that's not, that's a different business than what was originally there, Village Photo, all of those have been, have opened up shop with the current ownership and names and such since that 10% bylaw went into effect. So that, that, that's part of the problem there. I went down to, I've recently been down to a couple of different businesses on Central Street in particular for different things. And the business owners I talked to, as they start talking, they're not in support of this. There was one business in particular, the copy shop down there, that he indicated, as far as he was concerned, it was a violation of his free speech, he was going to get signs made up talking, you know, about First Amendment right in terms of it's, it's my right for, and whatever his sale was going to be kind of thing, whether it was tongue-in-cheek or joking, whatever. And, and just kind of, again, same thing with the CVS that, that was built, what, 15 years or so ago? I'm, I'm curious as to who's going to go down to CVS and, and talk to them about taking down all the signage they have. Again, it's 80, 90% of their window fronts covered with large red signage, same thing with Dunkin' Donuts. Who's going to go down and tell the biggest taxpayers in this town in terms of commercial businesses that they're in violation and that they need to take those things down? Thank you.
Council Man.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one more thing, through you. Council Moriarty brought up the fact that Village Photo and Styles, the, the majority of their windows are, are filled up. We're talking signage that sticks to the windows, we're not talking displays. Majority of that stuff is displays set back in the windows. We've got the mannequins and we've got the, the beautiful pictures that Village Photo, Photos do. Styles windows, they're tall, they're very tall. And the tops, I believe, are the one that says Styles on it. I'm just saying, I'm not nitpicking with displays. You're talking signage in the window, sticking on to the window. That's what I'm getting from this. So that's all I wanted to say and that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I'm going to add my two cents in. Obviously, this is healthy discussion and I got to say, really, nobody's wrong here. One thing I will say is Councilor Nicole is 100% correct. We could spend hours on this, in more hours, but until we enforce it, it means nothing. We have, we have, our next agenda is bylaws. We have people that don't follow the bylaws on shoveling sidewalks. This all means nothing if we don't hold people accountable. Really. And let's go a step further. There's five of us here tonight. This is the first reading. We're going to have another reading on it. There's probably going to be three or four more of the councils here at the next meeting. They're going to have a different opinion on their take on it. My feelings personally is you have to come up with a spirit of compromise somehow, middle ground, because the bottom line is, and it's no disrespect on people, but once we vote this in, I want, I would love to see them hold everyone accountable to these bylaws because if any one of us sit up here and says they're going to do that, we're lying. We are just lying. We're trying to do our due diligence, but in my opinion is, and again, it's great debate going back and forth as it should be, but the bottom line is we've got to have some sort of a spirit of compromise to move forward with this because, quite frankly, I think we're going to waste a lot of energy and time on this. In a year from now, two years from now, three months from now, everyone's going to be scratching their head going, wow, we did all that, but nothing's changed. I mean, you'll have Nick Tortoise come up here and say, oh, the yard sale signs are posted on trees and everywhere else. We have a bylaw, but we don't enforce it. We have building codes. Do we enforce all those? No. And that's the reality of it. So with that being said, we have an amendment, a motion to amend this, and if you could repeat it, and we also have a second so everyone understands where we're going with this, we can proceed.
Thank you. The, the motion I would like to read is to remove, remove and have it say, a maximum amount of 25% of the glass on storefront windows may be used for signage.
And we had a motion and you second it. Any other discussion on this? Council Moriarty?
I just have one quick question. To my recollection, the sign bylaws in particular were put together by the, the former manager's intern at the time. Does anybody know whether or not the economic development, the downtown partnership, any businesses were ever approached about the signed bylaw? The people that would actually have an impact? None of us own, own storefront businesses.
If I might, yes. The redevelopment, I'm going to let Mrs. Ackley say, because I know that some people had input other than just us.
Yes, it was a committee. We had downtown businesses, historical commission members and the town manager and myself.
And initially, the bylaw read 10%. And after we were presented with the changes, the change had gone from 10% to 50%. And in subcommittee, we compromised to 25%. And that was what we were bringing forward until we had a second subcommittee meeting where it was summarily voted to remove completely. That was, that's the history of these, of these two bylaws.
The redevelopment, the redevelopment authority has their own guidelines for the downtown redevelopment area. So in the interest of having a smooth transition, what they say in their design guidelines is that the signs have to be in good taste and they, they didn't want to make another set of rules, but they knew this was coming.
Council Moriarty.
So then with that, I would assume if, if they've already got guidelines that talk about they need to, to be aesthetically pleasing basically, that kind of works in conjunction with the bylaws. So even if we have no bylaw restriction on the window front, they're still being told they need to keep that looking clean and appropriate, correct?
It's a one-pager in the design guidelines. I can't remember exactly what it said, but I do know that what they didn't want to do was set up another set of bylaws because there were three signed bylaws at one point. So they wanted to make it, they wanted to make it a, a little more simple. But they would feel very strongly about obnoxious signing, signage in the downtown.
So, so what you're saying, if I, if I understand you correctly, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but basically there is a contingency regardless of what happens with this tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
One second, Mr. Zotos. Council Man.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mrs. Ackley. I'm sorry. You're getting your exercise.
You know what I think I'm going to do? I think I'm going to, because this is only your first reading now. So I think what I'm going to do is give the town manager a set of design guidelines for you all. I think you had received them back when they were initiated, but I think we'll give you all your own set again.
Thank you. My question to you is, you mentioned that you had meetings with the businesses. What were, what were their views?
They were, it was a reactionary thing because we were trying to do some enforcement, or the town was trying to do some enforcement. And the old bylaws were a little, some old-fashioned strictures in them. And Zoe's had been approached that they shouldn't have those cute little neon signs that they have. And I think we all felt that, no, those are cute, those are not bad, those are, those are very nice. They say the message, they're not overdone, but really they are illegal under our current bylaws. So that's the reason why it got started. And they all felt very concerned that they wanted to have the signed bylaw be fair. And it was Judy from Village Photo was there, Zoe's was there, I can't, Styles was there. I can't remember who else was there. But they are willing, they are willing to have reasonable sign bylaws.
So they were okay with a reasonable amount of?
They were. We actually vetted that over several months.
Okay, and those were the businesses that came to you, to that meeting? And you approached the businesses, other businesses as well?
Well, we, the partnership is, you know, the partnership is not very active at this point, but we have, and there are some businesses downtown with a lot of signage.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackley.
Ms. Z.
Yes.
Certainly.
Hi. Paul Zotos, 60 Charlton Street. You know, it seems like you guys are in a analysis paralysis. We, we agree with a little bit of what everybody says here tonight. I can almost see it in the audience. So I think you got a little, we got to talk about it a little more. There's a few things that haven't been mentioned. One, there's a Statue of Liberty downtown waving at people driving by. Does, does that fit into the businesses' sign? I mean, I think that's a real distraction. I lived there for five years, Mr. Reed, and it was very hard to cross the street because the cars weren't sure you were ready to cross and the Statue of Liberty is standing there waving. And that's a big, that's a living sign that's standing in front of a store. That's one thing. It's very dangerous. People are having fun waving at him and somebody's trying to cross the street. It's a real danger. I, you know, Liberty, that's their way of advertising, but it's dangerous having a guy distracting drivers as they drive by. And there's a sign that's really bothering me. One, we paid, we have paid for almost every sign that is downtown, the business signs. We've paid for them. We've bought their awnings and we've bought the actual sign. We just paid for four more signs, Liberty, Main Creation, Sturbridge Insurance, of all signs. And there's one empty. The baby store doesn't have a sign yet, you know? So if we're paying for the sign in the awning, I think we could just ask those merchants to, you know, give some window space. After paying for your sign and paying for your awning, is it that much to say, hey, we don't want the signs too big? Now, right across the street from the Statue of Liberty, there's a 10 by 10 sign saying that there's a daycare center coming last September. It never came. And before that, there was a karate school, 10 by 10 karate school. Yeah, I think it came and it left before anybody got to go to the karate school. So Community Connections has a 10-foot by 10 sign saying, register to vote. What is that? You know, so there's a lot of mixed signals here. So those big signs, we don't know what they're doing there. And those aren't even businesses that are on Main Street. There is no daycare center, is no karate school. I mean, to register to vote in Spanish, 10 by 10, really? What, what is that? I don't understand what that means. Community Connections and there's, there's nothing that explains what Community Connections is. It looks like a place to register to vote. So you're on the right track. Sturbridge probably has gone too far. There's, there's the other issue of all these A-frames. Who gets to put these A-frames up on what sidewalk? Somebody can put a sidewalk, I mean, an A-frame up. I can't. If I'm running for council next year, I can't put an A-frame up saying, vote for me, next to Make Southbridge Home. So we've got to do something about these A-frames. There's way too many. And most of them, you can't read. There's so many words on an A-frame, they're, they're really senseless. They're, either somebody will get distracted, it'll have to stop and read a paragraph, you know? I mean, to join the pomp and onus, there's 40 lines going around a rotary, you're trying to read an A-frame. So, you know, there's a lot of work to be done with signage, you know? We, we tried a banner across Main Street. Now, nobody can read a banner waving at the Statue of Liberty, looking at the 10-foot sign, and then you've got to read, you know, a banner. What, what's going on? We can't, we're trying to get through Main Street, not hit anybody, cross. Last time I, excuse me, I'm always funny when I'm mad. I don't know how I get to tell these jokes, but you know what I mean? I'm trying to cross the street. Last time I was up here, I asked for crossing guards because we can't cross the street.
Mr. Zotos? Better stay on the subject here.
I know.
You're going off the subject now. I asked you to stay.
It is.
We're talking about sign bylaws.
There's one, there's one more sign problem I think we have. It may have slipped my mind because there's just so much to talk about signs. When the political signs go up and down, how big they can be, where I could put them, it was really hard to figure out the best place to put a political sign, you know? So. So.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Cartoon characters?
I'm sorry, this is supposed to be on the window signage. We're not talking about political signs. That's a whole separate bylaw itself.
Well, we put political signs in store windows, some, some.
That's a whole separate bylaw, Mr. Chair.
Well, so we got a lot to talk about. We can't just focus on one sign or one issue unless we do it all. And, and we've kinda, I got off the subject a little bit, but no, because we're trying to drive through town. And these signs have to be, have to connect you with the business, and they have to be brief enough. I, I, I think all these convenience stores should, milk, butter, eggs, bread, food, you know? To sell cigarettes at all these stores, you don't see prices of cigarettes in Sturbridge. And that, that doesn't look good to anybody. And again, we've done a lot for these businesses, and if we just approach them as friends, and say, "We all want to make this a, a pretty town," you know? I, I've had to film it for 12 years, and, and I like the signs, and I, you know, and but, we've gotta get a standard that we all believe in, and, and we just gotta point out to some of these businesses that it will help them. It really will, you know? Signs, signs are important, and iconic signs, and a brand that everybody gets in one second. We can't read paragraphs. Any signs with paragraphs are a danger to driving. Maybe those are windows, but still, we're trying to get through seven lights and six crosswalks. It's almost impossible. Then there's the "Don't cross" sign, and then there's the, you're gonna hit the sign.
Mr. Zotos, are you all set? I think you got your point across.
We were confused. I'm sorry, but that's my two cents, and most of us in the back in the corner, that's how we felt, so they sent me up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zotos. Okay, we're gonna move on the amendment, vote on the amendment. Uh, we have a first and a second, and we, we'll have a roll call, please.
Council Landervan?
No.
Council Manah?
Yes.
Council Morierati?
No.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
No.
No. Two yes, three no?
Motion does not pass.
I'd like to also make a motion to amend page 6-9-202-6, and cross out "remove," and have it re-display window signs, sign on the surface of, or the inside. Display windows lighted only by the building, illumination cover no more than 25% of the display window area allowed.
Have a second on that?
Second.
Discussion?
Could you re, have a repeat that? I didn't hear one word.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Council Manah, thank you.
Um, the, the amendment was for page 6, 9-206, to cross out "remove," strike out "remove," and have it re-display window signs, signs on the surface of or inside display windows lighted only by the building, illumination, and cover no more than 25% of the display window area are allowed.
Thank you, Council Manah. All set, Council? We have a second discussion on this. Council Morierati?
No real discussion, just ditto. Thank you.
Yep. Council Manah?
I'd like to also say, appearance is everything, so ditto also. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say that I will be back next year to complain about what the new business on Main Street looks like, when it's littered with paper all over it, and people are complaining that they've got their, you know, rights to free speech. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Manah?
Yes.
Council Morierati?
No.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Landervan? I'm sorry, Council Vandal?
No.
Council Landervan?
On this one, I believe, yes.
Yes. Three yes, two no?
Motion passes. Any other discussions on the first reading on the sign bylaws? Seeing none, this will be on the agenda at our next meeting for the second reading. Thank you, councilors.
Do we have, don't we have to vote on that?
Uh, yes.
Vote on the overall?
Yes. I apologize. Thank you, councilor. So with that being said, could I?
So moved.
Yep.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Morierati?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manah?
Yes, with reservation.
Thank you, and thank you again, council. Uh, Agenda Item Number 13, uh, vote to approve the proposed bylaw changes as prepared by the Bylaw Review Committee and approved at the Gen Government Subcommittee Meeting on November 25th, 2013. This is the second reading, and Counselor Nicola will take it from here. And this did go through our attorneys also. Um, that's why we postponed it till today. We wanted them to look it over. With that being said, Council Nicola?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, this, we're gonna start with page 9, Section 2-102. Words should be, quote, "registered," not qualif, unquote, "not qualified," and to remain as written. This would be helpful if you actually have the bylaws in front of you, so. Page 13, Section 2-801-1, four members elected by the voters of Southbridge, 3-7-1, changed to 3-6-1. A lot of this is housekeeping, just so you know that. Page 16, Section 3-102-1, changed from 4-3-4 to 4-3-2. Section 3-104, general laws, changed to MGL, which is Mass. General Law. Page 1920, Section 3-204, change Facilities Management and Construction Committee to Municipal Building Committee. Page 21, Section 3-209.2, quote, "and enforcement," end quote, to remain. Pages 23 and 24, Section 3-215, recreate, quote, "recreation committee." If you look, it says "reserved" in red, which tells you nothing. But thank you to Mr. Plouffe for getting this information for me. Back in March, March 30th, 2009, we actually reestablished the Recreation Committee, and there is language that should be inserted in this bylaw, and it is Section 3-215, and it reads "establishment." And this, Mr. Chair, is going to need to come up for a motion to re-insert this, because as it stands, it's not inserted in the, in the bylaw.
Correct.
It reads "establishment." The Recreation Committee shall be comprised of a five-member board. Members shall be appointed by the town manager and confirmed by the town council. Members of the Recreation Committee shall serve an office term of three years. Terms are to be staggered. At the first appointment, two members shall be appointed for three-year terms. Two members shall be appointed for two-year terms, and one member shall be appointed for a one-year term, with all subsequent terms to be three years. After the first appointment, under this section, all appointed terms of the Recreation Committee shall terminate upon swearing-in of a new appoint, of new appointed members. All members of the Recreation Committee shall at times be a resident of the town of Southbridge, provided, however, non-residents who hold a town office or town employment may serve by virtue of their office. The members of the Recreation Committee shall be impartial and may not actively participate in any active leagues which utilize the town recreation areas. 3-215.2, authority and responsibility. The Recreation Committee shall conduct programs for the town under the direction of the town manager. The committee shall propose new program activities and review existing programs for approval by the town manager, and shall be responsible for the scheduling of activities on town recreation areas. It shall perform such other duties as the town manager may require from time to time. An advisory group of leagues that do utilize the town recreational areas will also be constructed. The advisory board will work with the Recreation Committee regarding town recreation areas. An advisory group consisting of the presidents/chairperson of each organized sport league or their designee shall be eligible to participate on the advisory group. All members of the Recreation Committee shall serve without compensation. And that was passed by the town council back in March of 2009. So I'd like to entertain a motion, if I could, to insert that in place.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? We have a roll call, please, then.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manah?
Yes.
Council Morierati?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors.
On page 44, Section 6-101.3K, to read, quote, "At the time of filing the application, each, the ti, at the time of filing the application, each applicant shall pay the necessary fee to the town of Southbridge. See current fee schedule for fee amount," end quote. Section 6-101.4, added to end, quote, "An applicant requesting a renewal of a license must apply in person for such license renewal and provide such materials as required by the chief of police," end quote. Section, um, 6-101.5, add, quote, "See current fee schedule for deposit fee amount for each badge," end quote. Page 45, Section 6-101.7, hours of operation changed from 10:00 PM to, quote, "or comma after the hour of 8:00 PM of any day except by appointment," end quote. Page 46, Section 6-101.11, quote, "Remove," quote, "not exceeding $50," end quote. Page 59, Section 701.4.2, changed to read, quote, "No person shall place any leaves, garden trimmings, or other like substance upon any sidewalk or street in the town except in officially approved containers for the sole purpose of collection by employees or designated agents of the town during designated period of collection," end quote. Page 61, Section 7-110, add, quote, "or any individual car," end quote. Page 62, Section 7-201, changed to read, quote, "A record of registration numbers of each vehicle so, so removed shall be kept that also states the place to which it was removed, and within 12 hours, the police department shall notify the owner or his agent," end quote. Page 68, Section 7-406, changed to read, quote, "No owner or agent of an owner of premises abutting upon brick, concrete, or other curbed or other finished sidewalk shall place or suffer to remain for more than 24 hours upon cessation of the snowstorm," end quote. Page 69, Section 7-501.1, youth protection curfew, remove first sentences and keep only, quote, "Town council may invoke and remove the youth protection curfew at their discretion," end quote. Page 76, Section 7-503.4, add to D., quote, "Refer to fee schedule," end quote, remove dollar amounts. Page 77, Section 7-504.2, remove administrative rules section and add word, quote, "reserved," end quote. Page 8, Section 7-506, change prohibition of camping to, quote, "camping fine," end quote. Page 8, Section 7-507.4, penalties, remove, quote, "C," end quote. Page 9, Section 9-201.1.3, at end of Section A, add "refer to fee schedule" and remove dollar amounts. Page 97, regulation of signs. Note, sign bylaw changes are pending approval by town council. Page 100, Section 10-101.11, changed to read, quote, "Garbage or mixed garbage and rubbish shall be stored in receptacles with tight-fitting covers. Said receptacles and covers shall be of metal or other durable rodent-proof material. Such containers may remain upon any sidewalk or street in the town from 12:00 noon the day prior to 12:00 noon the day following trash collection," end quote. Section 10-101.2, wording changed to read, quote, "Plastic bags shall be used to store garbage or mixed rubbish and garbage in receptacles with tight-fitting covers," end quote. Remove the rest of the paragraph. Section 10-101.3, remove, quote, "That contains three or more dwelling units," end quote. Section 10-102, remove, quote, "That contains three or more dwelling units," end quote. Page 102, Section 10-103.3, remove, quote, "Unit if the stairs, stairways, or landing are not used by another occupant," end quote. Finished.
Thank you for your assistance, council. Any questions on this? Again, this will be on the agenda for the last and final reading at our next meeting. With that being said, I have a motion and a second on this.
I don't think you do.
I don't think we do on that.
So moved to accept, though.
Second?
Second.
No other discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manah?
Yes.
Council Morierati?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you, councilors. Agenda Item Number 14, Council's Forum. Council Morierati?
Thank you. Uh, I guess I was gonna bring up, uh, kind of the same thing you brought up earlier during the chairman's announcements in terms of the plowing thing, but you kind of already took care of that. Uh, I did, I did wanna note, and I was hoping originally that, uh, the DP, even though there's nothing on the DPW here tonight, I was hoping against hope that the DPW director would be here, uh, just because I, I had a, a phone call over the weekend about a resident who was upset that, uh, they had seen, and I'll pass this off to you, the manager, uh, I guess, uh, the, what used to be Five Star Auto down on the corner of Main and West, a resident called. They were concerned, wondering why, uh, they said that they saw a town vehicle plowing out that parking lot of what is now a vacant business, uh, and that the subsequent day, uh, there were people down there selling Girl Scout cookies or, or something to that effect, and he was just kinda curious as to how that happened, sort of thing.
I believe it's the same location, but I did speak with the DPW director today about that, and I believe the, the reason behind that was that the DPW was very concerned with the warm weather and rain and so forth about flooding. They were down there to clean up some catch basins, and in the process, took the snow that was covering the catch basins and had to put it on that property. So when they were done, they removed...
What they put there.
What they put there.
Okay, thank you. And that, that would be a good explanation. Uh, again, it was just a resident that was assuming that there was some sort of favoritism, perhaps. Just wanted to note as well, tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 25th of February, that John Dufresne is, is putting together a meeting, discussion with food for the dog park that he's putting together. I had a good chance, uh, this past week, uh, with the Economic Development Coordinator, Sandy Ackley, and, uh, met with Ron Plouffe as well, and, uh, John, and John Dufresne's and, and Susie Gears from the Rec. Committee, uh, about that, and, and it was a really good meeting and, and optimistic, so just encourage people to take part in that, that meeting, perhaps tomorrow night, at Elm Center Cafe, uh, right outside the town hall here. And then, at 6:00 PM tomorrow night, thank you. Uh, and then lastly, uh, this weekend, and, and again today, I've just had two people that have reached out to me, uh, that they are interested in, in various board vacancies, um, and, and are at various stages, I guess, of, of kind of putting in their request or their application, um, and, and both of them are kind of concerned as to, uh, the speed in which things are moving. One of, one, one individual, uh, feels that, that, uh, different people have kind of been giving them different answers or, or expectations as to what is going on, and, and the other had a handful of questions as well. So I, I guess what I'm looking for ideally is, is if we can get an updated list even of what board vacancies we have, I don't know how many that we have, but, but also just kind of, uh, where we are in those processes to, to fill those vacancies. Not necessarily for tonight, obviously, but just going forward, if we can kind of take a look at that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you make sure that goes on the Cable Access Channel 2, our vacancies for our board? So we get the word out to the public, please? Thank you.
It is.
Council Nicola?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Council Vandal?
Um, I've gotten a few phone calls on, uh, comments that I made about the garage on Main Street, the garage and gas station, and, uh, they don't seem to be in favor of putting a Cumberland Fund... Farms on Main Street. They said, you know, it's going to be too dangerous, too much traffic. The few phone calls that I got were against it. They don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Councilman Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I do have a few things tonight. First of all, I'd like to touch on something that Mr. Reed had spoke about in regards to the charter and the lack of complaints. Is there any way I can get a copy of that letter? I actually, I, I had a citizen put in a complaint with me in regards to cellular and, and cable communications and whatnot. And who's held accountable when these things fail and are there any policies and such? So I'm just going to do some research on that. And, I mean, it's, it's interesting to know that, you know, the last couple of weeks and tonight, the cables come up. I mean, we, we pay an enormous amount of money for cable. Where we pay an enorm, a lot of people pay an enormous amount of money for their cellular bills or internet or whatnot. Some of the businesses actually need them. But what happens when these fail us and, and we're forced to do other things? So I'm just going to be looking into this a little bit and doing a little bit of research. I did put out a couple of emails to our local and state representative in regards to policies, if there's any policies that Massachusetts actually has set in place. And I'm going to reach out to some towns to see if they have any type of policies or anything for such a thing, if there's anything out there. It, it's quite interesting, so if you could get me a copy of that letter, I would greatly appreciate that. And also, I would like to say, Mr. Reed, you also, again, you touched upon something else I was going to talk about tonight in regards to the Disability Commission getting ahold of you in regards to widening walkways and paths and stuff. I have a note here that says, you know, "We remind people to shovel their, their walkways and whatnot and be, you know, respectful of that when a storm hits." But we also have to remember too, we do have disability, disabled people who don't move around as well as we do. They have a wheelchair or they have crutches or a cane or something. And just to make it passable for everyone is great and it just only, it just takes a few extra minutes to do, you know, just to make it a little bit wider instead of, you know, and remember, they got the curbs there too for some of the handicap, you know, to make sure those are clear and whatnot. And finally, I just want to say that I'm just a little bit disappointed tonight in the way the, the bylaws for the signage went down in regards to the storefront windows. I, I am all for freedom of speech and advertising and all this other stuff and the government not being too restrictive of us, but we have to have some guidelines set. We, there has to be something set in place. I mean, the state brings it down to us. We have to go by what the state tells us. There has to be something. If we just let everyone run amok, then that's what's going to happen. The town's going to be amok. So I was all in favor of 25%, maybe even a little bit more possibly, you know, but I, I was just a little bit disappointed tonight in the way that the sign bylaws went and for the windows. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Moving on to agenda item number 15, discussion on the next meeting date will be March 10 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. 16, we're going to vote to enter an executive session according to chapter 39, section 23B to consider the purchase, exchange, taking, lease, or value of real property to discuss strategy with respect to collecting, bargaining, and to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion on this? All in favor? Thank you. Yeah, roll call, please. Thank you.
Councilman Landervan?
Yes.
Councilman Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilman Vandal? Five yes?
Thank you, councilors. Everyone have a nice evening.